All right, y'all. Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:30. We are starting our September 9, 2025, regular city council meeting. Uh, we are now ready to do the pledge and we have Abby Berger and Sienna Alanese, uh, students with the Bachelor of High School Bear Tech's Robotics. Are they here? There you are in the back. All right. If y'all can please come up here to the front and... Yeah, y'all gotta say it in front of everybody. All right. So we'll do the, the pledge and then the, the Texas flag also. So on your, on your mark, you kick us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to Texas. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Hey, no worries. It happens to the best of us. All right. So, uh, yes, please give them a hand. Thank you. All right. We're gonna take your picture. Colin's gonna get your picture. He's right behind you. If you want to come stand up here, we'll get out of your way. You can... Where do you want him at, Colin? Okay, all right. All right. Thank you again, ladies. Okay, uh, for our invocation this evening, we have Keetrick Steeger. Steger? Sorry, sir.
It happened to the best of us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There you go. Touche, touche. All right, now go ahead and bless us.
Oh, thank you, Lord. Father, we thank you for this time today. We ask you to show us your way. Teach us your path. Lead us in your truth, for you are the God of our salvation. On you we wait all the day. And so, Lord, we come, we thank you for what you're doing in this city. Lord, what you've done and what you're about to do. Let us understand the steps we take today is not just for today, but it's for generations to come. And Lord, as we commit our ways to you, you will establish our work and our path. So we bless this time, this evening, with your peace and love. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. I want to agenda item 4A, the mayor's report. Uh, I really don't have much to report from last week. It's, it, I guess you could say it would be fun, maybe not so much fun, but we've been busy with meetings every week, so we don't have that much time to do other things. I just will say, last Thursday, I celebrated my birthday. It was, um, a momentous event. No, it really wasn't. It was just a great time. I enjoyed it. I'm 44 now, so thank y'all who wished me happy birthday and those who celebrated with me. That's all I have. Um, city, um, council members' report. We'll start with council member Lowe.
I knew you were gonna do that. Um, uh, we had a great time at the, uh, state of the city. Uh, we got a lot of good information, a lot of, um, shocked looks and some of the things that we have been planning and, uh, we were eager to share that information. So, uh, that was a great time. Um, also too, Bastrop Live is happening right now, um, throughout the city. Um, it is a, uh, music series that's gonna be happening every weekend in September. It started last week and it will go to the end of the month. Uh, it'll be in downtown Bastrop, so you'll be able to be in some of the places down there. Uh, all genres are represented, so, which is really cool. And, um, you know, it supports our local economy. So, uh, definitely go out and have a ball, kick off your shoes and have a, have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Lowe. Council member Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah. Second, the, uh, statement about last night's State of the City. It was amazing and our city manager is amazing. I call her Wonder Woman, but Sylvia Carrillo Trevino is, she is a Wonder Woman. And if you'd seen all the things that she's led us through this past year and things to come that are gonna just be incredible, then you would agree with me also. So thank you to our city manager. Uh, I want you to be aware that this Thursday, uh, which is 9/11, at 8:00 AM at Earhart Field, that's the football field here in town, uh, the junior ROTC will be leading the memorial ceremony at 8:00 AM that morning. So public, please join us, 8:00 AM, Earhart Field, this coming Thursday, 9/11 ceremony. Also Saturday, uh, September 20th is gonna be our next music in the museum and it's gonna be the Downtown Jazz Trio and that's from 12 to 2. So please mark your calendars for September 20th. Thanks.
Thank you, council member Meyer. Mayor Protim Kirkland.
I also want to thank our city manager for a spectacular job last night at the State of the City. Um, I want to, uh, thank Robin Luck for the owl statue that was recently unveiled in front of the movie theater and her husband, Joe Grady Tuck, who funded that. It was a tremendous, tremendous amount of work that she put into that and she did a fabulous job and generations of Bastropians will be looking at that for many years and in the future and something to be proud of. Um, also, this last Thursday, I was the master of ceremonies for the Farm Street Opry for our mayor's birthday. And, uh, we had Stephen Pride, the brother of the legendary Charlie Pride, was our musician for the evening. He did a fabulous job and, uh, his second set, he played a bunch of his brother's songs. And so one of the things that you do at, uh, Farm Street Opry is you ask how many people there are from the city of Bastrop. And, uh, there's about four people that typically raise their hand and Larry's one of them, so thank you, Larry. Appreciate that. But, uh, there, uh, and, and we'll commonly have 300 people there or so, uh, and it is an amazing, amazing show. And so I would just recommend other people from the city of Bastrop come out and see what we've got going on for Farm Street Opry. And, uh, and I got a haircut this week, but yeah, whatever. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protim. Council member Plunkett.
Well, as usual, I stole most of my thunder, but, um, I'll... One, two, three. Fourth, the, uh, job that Sylvia did, but also wanna thank the chamber for putting that event together. Events are hard and they are excellent at putting these things on and that's a great way to, uh, inform the public in a bigger way rather than, you know, listen to a four-hour, uh, uh, city council meetings, you know, three or four times a month and then try to glean something from that. It's nice to have it tied up in a nice little one-hour bow, so thank you for that.
All right. Thank you, council member Plunkett. Council member Fosler.
Hello. Good evening, y'all. It's good to see all the senior center here. Yeah, it's very fun. We'll get to y'all, don't worry. Um, two weeks ago, I got to go to the regional warning conference hosted by CapCog Homeland Security Division with Fire Chief Rosales and Public Information Manager Collingetta. Uh, the Bastrop County, um, Office of Emergency Management was there and our entire 911 dispatch was there, as well as 10 counties around us. And we learned how to write really concise messages in the time of emergencies. You know this. Um, a lot of messages, so they need five elements. I'm just gonna teach you real quick because if they go down and I go down, then we're gonna need everybody to be able to give emergency management messages. Five things, the source of the situation, the hazard, the location, the time and the guidance. Tell people what to do. Tell people when it's safe to go out. Tell people what to do. So it was super interesting and, um, I'm, I, I've been telling Colin for a while, like when, when, when stuff goes down, I wanna be on the emergency management, uh, communication team, cause that's my jam. So I learned how to do that. Um, this Saturday, we've got the Feed the Need Gala coming up. That's their biggest fundraiser and it will be fantastic. Um, yes, the barred owl is awesome and there's even gonna be another one at the end of September, not another owl, another bird. Um, September 27th, 10:00 AM, across from City Hall, there's gonna be another bird sculpture reveal. I don't know what it is. I don't just find online. There's always chatter about it, but I don't know what it's gonna be. And then, yes, I wanna give another shout out to the Bastrop Live, uh, that's gonna have live music every single weekend, every single venue, pretty much every venue, downtown Bastrop for the whole month of September. And then finally, one of our longstanding businesses is closing, Tough Cookie Bakery. They've been here nine years. They've been in downtown Bastrop for nine years. They are closing their doors at the end of September and we're so sad. They've been our dedicated, like, um, gluten-free vegan place, embrace diversity. They've really been, uh, really cultural icon in downtown Bastrop. So please give them lots of business for this last month of September. That's all I can think of.
All right. Thank you, council member Fosler. All right. Now for our city manager's report. Madam city manager.
I will, uh, keep it short. Colin, that does not look like what I have on my screen. I'll make sure I'm in the correct one. If not, I can talk through it. That's it. All right. So, um, let's talk about an update to Mayfest Park Open House, which, uh, happened last week. Um, we do have a survey out. We do have some initial responses. I don't wanna taint the survey by telling you what those are. Just know that that survey closes at 5:00 PM on September 16th. So if you've not taken the survey about Mayfest Park, please do so. Um, the Bark Park and its amenities were out for pricing. The two important structures at the Bark Park were the shade structure at the entrance and a wash basin at the entrance and some, some other smaller improvements that are negligible, but the big order stuff is, um, just awaiting pricing. Um, we do talk about the budget on the 23rd and the 30th. Those are different dates from what was originally published, so I wanna make sure that everybody sees that on their, um, date. Um, we are still proposing a no new revenue rate and no fee increases, so that's good with a balanced budget. Um, we are working on the bridge. You've seen everybody down there collectively. I've gotten questions about, my goodness, the bridge has been able to carry all of that heavy weight. Why were we closed off from the bridge for so long? And I just wanna tell you, that was before Sylvia. That wasn't me. So, you know, here we are. Uh, we are at, uh, we are looking at a plan to add steps to the bridge and, uh, that looks something like that. And so you'll have another connectivity to the river bridge from the bridge itself, so you don't have to walk all the way around the museum to get there. The museum is having some additional steps also put in so that that incline down from Main Street down into the park is also much safer and you're not playing Frogger with traffic trying to get there. And then there's also some ADA improvements that will be planned at Fisherman's Park, another switchback area so that you can get down to the River Loop. This is all part of our park and ADA improvements across the city. Um, lastly, we have a super big event and I wanna thank Dory and EDC, the Austin Business Journal, who knew that heckling from the audience would yield great results? Um, which is exactly what we did at the Austin Business Journal luncheon a few months ago. Um, they didn't have nice things to say about Bastrop, so I sort of yelled from the audience. And, um, it yielded their visit here and it yielded a really good, um, event that is actually sold out. So we have investors and people from all over the area coming to our little town to check it out. And we created a video for it and so Colin, if you would click on that video, I don't know if I can click it from here.
Bastrop has it all. I get nature, I get trees, I get small-town feel, I get big-city amenities in an affordable format. As a business, what you'll find when you come to Bastrop is decision-makers are all under one roof. Um, we streamline the permitting system. We have removed some barriers in the code itself.
There's a lot of different communities that they kinda make you figure it out. You go sort through all of these really nuanced questions, come back to us once you have a plan. Well, that's not really helpful because time is money.
If you wanna build a new shopping center here, a little commercial development, email the little mom and pop church project. We bring all those people to our back table and sit down with them and, you know, here's your water and sewer line situation, here's your electric situation, here's your, in the flood plain, here's what you can do with the drainage. By the time you submit the plan, you've addressed what you need to address.
We work for them literally and figuratively. So the better that we can all come out of that, the better the community is as a whole.
There's still rules that we care about, there's still regulations we care about, but we also want you to be successful and we want you to stay.
I bought the Foundry in December of 99. At the time, there was four employees. We've grown to 30,000 square feet and 44 full-time employees. Bastrop's been a partner in our growth from the very beginning.
We like to call the Bastrop Industrial Park a mini NATO because of its diversity with its international companies.
Our strategy is based on South Korea. We chose Texas because Bastrop is located between Austin and Houston. I saw a lot of potential customer in here. Austin and Houston lead strong power in Texas business.
So we understand that businesses bring a variety of income brackets to the table and so our job is to also ensure that the employees have a place to live.
You know, you wanna keep property taxes at a reasonable rate, but you want good sales tax for the business and you want quality life. You want restaurants, you want stuff where having young families move here, it's a good location.
The four ISDs in Bastrop County offer dual credit programs. We have the P-Tech pipeline from high school to ACC to local employers, all right here in Bastrop.
From an affordability standpoint, I can't say enough without Bastrop being a better place to live than anywhere else in the state.
There's a lot of beautiful places in America, but the thing that makes people want to be there is usually how they felt when they were there. And I promise that once you come and you experience the sights, the sounds, the music, the food, the culture, the people, you'll relocate here, no problem.
So, I'm also proud to say we will also be featured in another film that will be recorded here in the next couple of weeks. It's actually the International City Managers Association, so they selected Bastrop and yours truly. So we'll, we will be featured with 8,500 other city managers in cities across the globe, um, particularly for our ability to collaborate and the strides we've made over the last three years and being able to stretch a dollar when other cities in our area cannot do that. So, it's a good time to be in Bastrop.
All right. Is that it for your report? Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Sounds like a lot of good things coming. Um, all right. To, uh, tonight, I have four proclamations that I'm gonna be doing. So, uh, the first one I'll be doing, um... I don't personally, I'm not personally affected by it, but I, I do know some people who have had to deal with it and, um, the, it's, it's pertaining to suicide. You know, I, again, I don't, I don't have any personal experiences, but I do know some people that experienced it and, and it's tough on individuals' lives. Um, and I'll just say, if you know someone who's dealing with some things or, or maybe struggling, don't be afraid to inquire and ask and reach out and talk to them 'cause, so everyone can use a shoulder, everyone can use a friend, everyone can use someone to talk to. So, whereas in 2023, suicide was the 11th leading cause of death overall in the United States and the second leading cause of death among individuals ages 10 to 34 years. And whereas in the United States in 2023, over 49,000 individuals died by suicide. Whereas suicide rates increased approximately 36% in the United States from 2000 to 2023. And whereas in 2023, an estimated 12.8 million adults aged 18 years or older reported having serious thoughts of suicide and about one and a half million adults attempted suicide in the past year. Whereas in 2023, two in 10, two in 10 high school students seriously considered attempting suicide and almost one in 10 high school students reported that they had made at least one suicide attempt in the past year. Whereas in Texas, suicide is the second leading cause of death for ages 15 to 34. And whereas, over 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and potentially treatable mental health condition, although often that condition is not recognized or treated. And whereas, the negative attitudes associated with mental health conditions, suicidal thoughts and behaviors work against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk for suicide from seeking lifesaving help and further traumatize survivors of suicide loss. And whereas, most people who survive a suicide attempt, 85 to 95%, go on to engage in life. And whereas, everyone who has a role to play in preventing suicide can learn about suicide risk and warning signs and encourage those who struggle to seek help. Now, therefore I, Ishmael Harris, mayor of Bastrop, or the city of Bastrop, do proclaim the month of September as National Suicide Awareness Month in the city of Bastrop, Texas. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused official seal of the city of Bastrop, Texas, to be affixed on this ninth day of September 2025. The next one I'm gonna do is, uh, for the senior centers, senior center. Um, whereas, uh... Do y'all have anything y'all would like to say for the senior center? No? Okay. I just wanted to make sure. All right. Whereas, and, and thank you for, for this as well. Um, whereas the U.S. Surgeon General has identified loneliness as a national epidemic and whereas senior centers, center, senior centers serve as a vital community hubs where older adults gather, support one another and building lasting connections. And whereas continued funding authorized by the Older Americans Act of 1965 provides essential services and benefits for older adults, caregivers, family members and broader community through senior centers, centers across the region. And whereas, the city of Bastrop, in partnership with the Area Agency on Aging and Capital Area Council of Governments, works to increase awareness, encourage participation, expand access to senior centers and reduce loneliness amongst older adults. Now, therefore I, Ishmael Harris, mayor of the city of Bastrop, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Senior Center Awareness Month in the city of Bastrop to recognize the positive impact senior centers have within our community and support the 2025 theme, "Powering Possibilities," flip the script. Who came up with that? So I, I'm not done. I'm sorry, I kinda paused. I, I like that. So, um, which challenges outdated perceptions of aging and celebrates the creativity, connection, purpose and resilience that senior centers, centers inspire in later life. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Bastrop to be affixed this ninth day of September 2025. Now we can clap.
Would I be able to say just one thing?
Yes.
Okay. Um, as the president of the Bastrop Community Senior Center with our 385 members, um, we serve the community as well. We have the high school students coming in and mentoring our seniors with technology. We help pick up trash in the community. We serve vegetables and help the food pantry. We are community-driven in Bastrop and will remain that way. But I want to extend my humble gratitude to the council and to the, to Sylvia, the city manager, for the support that you, you guys give us all the time. Uh, it's, it's never-ending with the city council and the city manager, what you guys do to support the seniors in this community. And I think you guys deserve a round of applause because it's amazing.
Thank you. Colin, do we wanna take a picture?
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am. Please come up here and talk into the microphone so it won't get here.
Be nice.
Oh, I was being nice. I'm just kidding.
Okay. We've had a band that has played every Tuesday night since 1995 and I think that's commendable that the seniors have been able to provide that. We have a dance going on tonight, but if anybody would like to... We'd like to invite everybody to come, bring a dish to pass and, uh, we start at 6:30. We eat at 7:30 and that is every Tuesday night.
And when do y'all dance?
Oh, I don't know. I play in a band, so I don't dance, but anyway.
All right. What do you play? What instrument do you play?
Our band is called The Kitchen Pickers.
Okay.
And, uh...
Every Tuesday?
I've only been playing there since 2000.
Oh, wow. Only? Okay. All right.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll keep that on our schedule. When we're, maybe we'll stop by when we're not, so having so many Tuesday meetings.
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So if y'all would like to come up here, we're gonna take a picture with your group.
This is, this is part of our village. Take a look at it. I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
Mayor, just real quick, the, the seniors will be happy to learn that we're adding senior balance, um, pieces of equipment at a couple of our parks close to the senior centers.
All right. Have a couple more that we need to do. So, um... As we, uh, many of you may or may not know, uh, the month of September is, uh, Hispanic Heritage Month. Celebration starts mid-September, so, uh, we're gonna recognize that. So whereas the city of Bastrop recognizes the rich and growing contributions of Hispanic Americans whose traditions, cultures and values have inspired our community and whereas Hispanic families, entrepreneurs and leaders have long played an essential role in Bastrop's growth, strengthening our local economy, enriching our culture and encouraging future generations. And whereas, First National Bank of Bastrop founded in 1889 and deeply rooted in serving the people of Bastrop County has launched the FNB Contigo Initiative to honor and support Hispanic heritage, not just during Hispanic Heritage Month, month, but every single day of the year. And whereas, FNB Contigo Initiative reflects our shared values of community service and opportunity, grounded in our longstanding commitment to serve our community faithfully, to apply the golden rule in all our dealings and exceed expectations through high-touch relationships that strengthen the places where we live, work and raise our families. Now, therefore I, Ishmael Harris, mayor of Bastrop, city of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim Monday, September 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Celebration Day in the city of Bastrop, Texas. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Bastrop to be affixed on this ninth day of September 2025. Come on. Give us, give us one good one.
Okay. So the grieto came from a parish priest in Mexico when he was getting people together to rise up against the, the nation of Spain. And so it is actually a battle cry. And, um, I, I grew up in Brownsville, Texas, um, where, uh, strangely enough, it was a relatively normal thing to do. And last year I... Exactly, yeah. And last year I, I won our city's grieto contest and... And last year, I, exactly, yeah, and last year, I, I won our city's grito contest and, yeah, I got to wear a multicolored, uh, sombrero for the rest of the day, so let's give this a shot.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, my voice started cracking, I could feel it. Yeah. It, it's okay, he, he can pull it out next week, he can work on it this weekend. Yeah, he'll be ready next week.
I've been singing bass too much lately, it just, it's not compatible, you know?
Doesn't have the high pitch, I got you, I got you. All right. So, um, we have someone signed up for citizen comments for this one. Do you wanna do their citizen, you wanna do your comment for it now? Okay. All right. Right, no, this, this is part of the proclamation, she just...
Preparedness?
Preparedness, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go out of, oh, okay.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager and staff. Um, as we recognize this year's National Preparedness Month, preparedness starts at home. I'm here tonight in my role as the Executive Director of the Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team. I want to, first off, express my gratitude to the city for helping promote and share our disaster preparedness survey, which was, um, open for four weeks and concluded on August the eighth. Um, thank you for the support. We received four hundred and eighteen total responses with two hundred and eighty-six respondents identifying as Bastrop residents. Here are the results that were provided and a snapshot of where our community stands. Only ninety-seven respondents said they had family disaster plans, while another hundred and sixty-one said that their plans still need work. When asked if they felt confident in their ability to evacuate quickly, forty-nine percent answered they were only somewhat confident. A hundred and fifty-one respondents said they rely on Bastrop County alerts for information, and a hundred and thirty-three said social media posts are their main source. Many expressed frustration with having to depend on social media for critical updates. Only eleven percent reported having a disaster preparedness kit ready, which we call a go-bag. Though, sixty-eight said they had enough supplies at home to shelter in place for three days. Encouragingly, we asked if they would attend a preparedness event in their city, and fifty-four percent said they would. We also asked how residents felt about preparedness progress since the two thousand eleven fires. Forty-two percent said Bastrop County as a whole is better prepared. Twenty-two percent said specifically the City of Bastrop is better prepared. But thirty-four percent say they didn't feel any of the cities in Bastrop County were prepared. The majority of those responses came from residents that lived in the Tahitian Village area, many of whom pointed to neighborhoods like theirs with only one way in and one way out. These findings highlight both the progress we've made and critical gaps we still need to address, especially around family disaster planning, evacuation confidence, and accessibility to timely information. So, some ideas that we may work towards in partnership in the year coming is, uh, evacuation route planning, maybe provide evacuation signs, especially in single-entry areas like Tahitian Village. Annual Preparedness Day, we've done this with the City of Bastrop before, and we, uh, plan on, uh, returning to doing that. Incentives for preparedness, offer small incentives like utility bill credits, free smoke detectors, or even go-bags for residents who sign up for alerts, attend trainings, or submit proof that they created their family disaster plan. And create prepared Bastrop household, um, yard signs, something that people can display in their yard saying, "I'm prepared." Um, one thing that we really need to work on is accessible communication, standardized emergency posts with icons, bilingual text, and large-print PDFs would help. The City of Bastrop is the only city in our county that has a designated emergency page on their website, so maybe if we make sure that that information is translated into Spanish, that would be a plus for us. And the, with the concern about individuals having to go to social media to get critical updates, the county has a social media widget that is on their homepage, maybe putting that on the homepage, or very least, on the emergency page that the city has designated. So, we know prepared people save lives, and prepared neighborhoods save communities. I just wanna thank the City of Bastrop for your partnership, and I look forward to working with you all in the future to make sure that we get the resources and the tools to the citizens of Bastrop. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Whereas, the state of Texas historically leads the nation in a number of federally-declared disasters, whether natural, techno- technological, or human-caused. And whereas, Texas has the highest opt-out rate, twenty-nine and a half percent for wireless emergency alerts, and FEMA Region Six, which is five times higher than the state of the lowest rate of opt-outs. And whereas, National Preparedness Month is an opportunity to inform and educate residents, businesses, schools, and communities to develop the capabilities needed to prevent, protect, against, respond to, and recover from, and mitigate all threats and hazards. And whereas, preparedness is the responsibility of every resident, business, agency, and school in Bastrop and the surrounding region. And whereas, personal business, agency, school, college, university, and private sector preparedness can help mitigate the impacts of emergency incidents and disasters. And whereas, residents are encouraged to participate in preparedness activities, review information at ready.gov, and sign up to receive emergency alerts via WarrenCentralTexas.org to increase their knowledge and readiness. Now, therefore, I, Ishmael Harris, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim September two thousand twenty-five as National Preparedness Month in the City of Bastrop, and I will encourage all residents, businesses, schools, and communities to develop emergency preparedness, resiliency plans, and to register at WarrenCentralTexas.org to receive wireless emergency alerts. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Bastrop to affix this ninth day of September two thousand twenty-five. Thank you. Would you like to come up here and receive your proclamation? And your photograph? All right, thank you. So, we're on to citizen comments, and one of the, oh, sorry. I'm gonna utilize a citizen comment time for right now to allow, um, Chrissy DePine to come up here and speak. She's gonna speak in regards of, uh, Suicide Preparedness Month. Thank you.
Um, I'm, my name's Chrissy, and on behalf of the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention, I want to extend our sincere gratitude for recognizing September tw- two, two thousand twenty-five as Suicide Prevention Month. Your proclamation is a powerful acknowledgement of suicide as a cr- critical public health issue that touches every community. Your elf, your efforts bring hope to those who need it most and demonstrate that you stand behind your residents with compassion and resolve. My family and I have also been directly impacted with, by the loss of my son to suicide in two thousand twenty-two. Thank you again for your continued support and education.
You're welcome, thank you. You don't get to go anywhere, you get to accept this proclamation.
I'm sorry?
You're gonna get to accept this proclamation. All right. Now, we're on to the Veterans Memorial Art Call, Cultural Arts Commission. I know you, I'm sorry, Michaela.
All good. Um, Mayor, Council, Michaela Joyce, um, at Cultural Arts Hat currently. Um, I just wanted to call, come up here and let everyone know, you guys, as well as the public, that we will be posting our official art call tomorrow on the city's website, um, for our veterans memorial. Um, so, there will be a full application with all of the details, but just to summarize, um, we, our, our main request with this ask is that this, um, somehow has, incorporates the image of Julius Thomas, which was the first Bastropian killed in the veterans Vietnam War. Um, so, that's kind of the big thing. Location has not been determined, but will be determined here, we've got three locations that we're looking at. Um, so, there's all that information, we do ask that these are, it's kind of fitting. Um, we ask that all submissions are due by Veterans Day, so sixty days conveniently, um, from tomorrow when it'll be posted, so you can find those online, and then, um, all the information for submitting those is on that application as well. Any questions? Thank you.
Mayor Protem Kirkman has a question.
I can't see your lights, sorry.
With the pending changes to the Cultural Arts Commission, how will we finish this project?
So, it'll still go through cultural arts, so, um, coming forward to you guys in the next, uh, meeting, we'll be, uh, discussing to, a discussion to resolve Cultural Arts Commission as the commission currently stands, um, and transition us to a committee rather than a commission. Um, we, we feel like we could get more things done in more of a task force situation rather than a, a structured committee with, um, board meetings and things like that. We'll still meet in the same fashion every month like we do now, it'll just be more in a committee structure, so everything will still be handled the same way that we currently do, just through the committee rather than the commission.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Michaela. All right, we don't have any work sessions or staff briefings or board reports, so on to citizen comments. We have one additional citizen comment that is from Catherine and Larry Albers. Um, this is pertaining to Agenda Item Nine-B. They do not wish to, to speak, but they want to record their opposition, uh, to that as far as why, uh, they are re- opposing the rezoning of the property. So, do we have anything else? All right, thank you. We'll move on from citizen comments and on to Consent Agenda Item, uh, Eight. Uh, all matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council members, do we have anything that we need to pull from here?
Can I pull eight B and eight C, just for a quick shout-out?
Okay. So, we're pulling Agenda Item Eight-B. Consider an Act on a Resolution, Number R dash two zero two-five dash three-three, accepting a donation through the Lost Pines Art Center from Jeffrey Staten and Maria Montoya Staten, in an amount of seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars to, for two concrete bases for the next two Berry Junction sculptures.
I just wanted to say thank you to Maria and, um, Jeffrey for this donation. We get often corporate sponsors, which is really awesome, but we don't get, always get a lot of individual sponsors, and I just wanted to thank them for beautifying the downtown and the next one as well. Thanks, guys. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passage unanimous. All right, Agenda Item Eight-C.
I just wanted to thank Kathy Holberg for her donation for, um...
I was gonna read it.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Uh, I was trying to get my head back down here, and then also wondering why John's light was still on, so. Uh, consider an act on Resolution Number R dash two zero two-five dash one-three-two, accepting a donation from Kathy Holberg in an amount of nine hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase of a flower pot to be placed in downtown Bastrop. Okay, Council Member Foster.
Thank you, Kathy, this, uh, were you gonna say something? This, yeah, you're, no, Michaela, this is in honor of her husband. Yes, yes, that's what I wanted to say, I read that in the note, so thank you, Ca- Kathy, for beautifying downtown Bastrop in the honor of your husband.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passage unanimous. Okay, so now, we're gonna, we have Agenda, um, Consent Items Eight-A, Eight-D, Eight-E, Eight-F, and Eight-G. Uh, Eight-A, consider an act to resp- on the second reading of Ordinance Number two zero two-five dash six-four, amending the Bastrop Code and Ordinances, Chapter sixteen, Stormwater Drainage, Section sixteen point zero one point zero zero-three, titled Technical Standards, Design Methods and Procedures, and Section sixteen point zero one point zero zero-eight, titled Maintenance Agreement.
Motion to approve Items Eight-A, Eight-D through Eight-G.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, those passes unanimous, thank you, council members. All right, on to Agenda Item Nine-A, consider an act on a resolution, Number R dash two zero, two-five dash one-five-four, in support of addressing food insecurity and strengthening local food pantries. Oh, that was the proclamation I wrote? Okay, the res- okay. Okay. So, we need to make a motion on it.
We have to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. That's kind of what I was waiting on, why y'all confusing me up here.
So, so this one is on because we wanted to specifically address food insecurity. Is there anybody here who wants to speak on that, or did you want to speak on that?
I didn't, I don't have to speak on it.
Okay. See what happens when I miss Agenda Review?
I can read the resolution off of the packet, give me one second.
Okay.
Give me one second, everyone. All right. All right. Whereas, food insecurity, the lack of consistent access to enough food for an active healthy life continues to affect hundreds of Bastrop residents, including seniors, veterans, families with children, and individuals facing economic hardships. And whereas, the City of Bastrop has a population of approximately nine thousand six hundred and eighty-eight residents, with eleven and a half percent living below the poverty line, representing more than eleven hundred individuals, including a disproportionately high number of children, nearly twenty-two and a half percent of whom are under the age of five, live in poverty. And whereas, food access remains a significant challenge, with an estimated seventeen point three percent of residents in Bastrop County lacking easy access to large grocery store. Making local food pantries and distribution programs essential lifelines for thousands of residents in and around the City of Bastrop. And whereas, the Bastrop County Food Task Force and Coalition of Community Partners, Nonprofits, Public Stakeholders, work to coordinate resources, promote sustainable solutions, and advocate for stronger infrastructure to combat hunger in Bastrop and surrounding communities. And now, therefore, bid resolved by the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, that, one, the City of Bastrop recognizes food insecurity as an urgent and growing issue affecting the well-being of many of its residents, and commits to addressing its priority for public health, community resilience, and economic development. Two, the council pledges to support and partner with local food pantries... pledges to support and partner with local food pantries, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, mutual, and mutual aid groups, to ensure equitable access to nutritious food for all Bastrop residents. Three, the Bastrop, the city of Bastrop commends the efforts of the food pantry staff and volunteers, and encourages local individuals, businesses, and civic groups to contribute time, funds, resources, and resources to support hunger relief initiatives in our community. And four, the city council proclaimed September as Hunger Action Month in the city of Bastrop, and affirms its support for the Bastrop County Food Task Force and its efforts to coordinate county-wide hunger solutions, duly resolved and appointed by the City Council of Bastrop, Texas, this ninth day of September 2025. All right. Yeah, we still, who was the motion in a second? Did you catch that? Kevin was the motion, and, or Councilmember Pluckett was the motion, and Councilmember Meyer was the second. Okay. All right. Agenda Item 9B. Vote, sorry, thank you. I'm moving too fast. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, councilmembers. No, yeah, that's, that's what it is. I'm trying to hear that band. Okay, all right. Agenda Item 9B. Conduct a public hearing to consider an act on the First Reading of Ordinance Number 2025-67, for a zoning concept scheme request to rezone the project site from PEC Employment Center to Plan Development District, PDD, with a base district of P4, for the area described as being 7.398 acres out of the Steel Yard subdivision, Lot 3, located at 2002 South Highway 95, Bastrop, Texas, 78602, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, and move to include on the September 23rd, 2025 consent agenda for the second reading. Hello, Mr. Kelly.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is on, okay? This property is stated here is located on Highway 95. Kind of a landmark is the softball fields are to the north of, to the west is of the utility yard and to the kind of west side of the senior complex there on Linden, and to the south there you have Hawthorne. What's been proposed is, as stated, this is an existing EC zoning district. We're proposing going to a P4 district with a PDD. Is basically what's being proposed, and if it's okay before we go to public hearing, I'd like Shiva to kind of give you the more details, but the orange is gonna be a single-story restaurant. The yellow are gonna be townhouses. The purple would be retail downstairs with three stories up. You have a connection to that we worked, this project's been in the process really for almost a couple of years. Shiva took it over in February. One of the issues was connection to 95. You'll see to the south, there's one connection. So, Linden Street is an existing right-of-way that's stubbed out. It doesn't really pick it up on the north of the drawing up there. Stubbed out to 95, that's a bad corner, bad intersection, just a bad place to stub a street out. So, Shiva with the engineering firm has worked with Text Dot. There's one proposed driveway to the far south that will be set up as a cross-access easement. There's a lot to the south that still can be developed, so that driveway will be a shared access. And if that property ever develops, hopefully it'll connect to Hawthorne, so you can flow, flow through both developments. And then there'll be a connection to Linden Street, taking it out to go Linden Street. Through the process, there were some questions about, I'm gonna go over here in a minute and see. So, the existing is EC, which is pretty well a blank slate. So, we're actually downzoning this with higher requirements. So, and again, through the PDD, and this is a true PDD like Reed Ranch or Cinderell East, where you're really spelling out, these are the buildings, these are the lot coverage, it's not kind of a blanket slate of just 90%. So, through downzoning from PEC to P4 with less requirement, and through a PDD, we kind of did a combination of. This is kind of an overview of the warrants. I'll go in more in detail on the warrants. Is install a public sidewalk, Linden Street on one side of the right-of-way, and allow the sidewalk to be five feet instead of 10 feet. Is our current requirement has, if you put a sidewalk on one side, it's 10. If you do one on both sides, it's five. We're proposing doing a five-foot sidewalk, and I'll show you through an exhibit Y. Allow the parking spaces to be nine by 18 instead of 10 by 20. The other, list is a warrant, is a parking count for this site. This is gonna be a mixed-use retail commercial that will house cars necessary in the development, but also you have shared parking agreements, and I'll kind of go back to that. And then I want to clarify on this, allow 75% maximum lot coverage instead of the 60% lot coverage in the P4 base zoning. Again, currently, the zoning of EC allows 80% lot coverage. And the final drainage design, so we've done a kind of a master design of impervious cover based upon requirement, so that's been addressed. And then allow the building heights for the principal building to be a maximum of four stories instead of maximum three stories, which is allowed right in P4. And only structures that are being proposed to be four stories are those along Highway 95 per the exhibit. The townhomes will remain two stories, and a restaurant will be a single story. So, again, going back to the site, the purple is the, what we call mixed-use, where down, first floor will be retail, second, third, fourth floor, if they go that high, will be residential use. Again, the orange to the north is gonna be a single-story proposed restaurant. The yellow are the townhouses. And again, there you see in the design that blue is the proposed detention pond based on future impervious cover and requirement to footprint for that. Going back through the warrants, again, with the changes, we started this process back in February. We've made code changes since then. City staff want to be very transparent, and I really hate the word interpretation. As we continue to clean up the B3 code, a lot of this language will be cleared up. This one's pretty straightforward. The first one is the five-foot sidewalk. I'm gonna just show where that's coming from. So, if you look at this site, to the far west, you see Linden Street there. If you see the senior citizen is on the sidewalk specifically to the west of Hill Street, you'll see that little white strip. That's an existing sidewalk. They're gonna bring out, through their development, they'll have to improve Linden Street. We'll have to modify our fence, fence gates. Again, Linden right now is just basically a dead-end street to nowhere into our public works yard. So, the goal will, again, for safety concerns, there's no connection to 95. The connection is moved down to the south, cross-access easement. The goal is Linden Street now will connect, you'll have some going-out traffic, probably more for the residential uses. I assume most of the commercial will come off 95, but it will also allow the citizens to the west to come back into the development without having to get on 95. But on the sidewalk specifically, there's an existing five-foot sidewalk west of Hill Street, that the goal, as we work together and the developer will have to build Linden Street, is we'll put a sidewalk in across Bastrop Community Center Center and connect that sidewalk to five foot. So, staying on the west side of Linden Street, you'll have a connection from the development back to the existing sidewalk at Hill Street. The concern with if you put a sidewalk on the north side of Hill Street, so the good news, you'll have public sidewalk connectivity. The issue with on the west side, you see where you have the parking spaces for the ball field that will improve, do things with. So, you don't want a sidewalk going across. So, again, east and west will have connected connectivity on the south side of Linden Street to get from that development back into the city, so people can walk to the area, and then hopefully a lot of citizens that live west of development will come back into the restaurant and shops. Going back to the warrant, so that's that one. Building height, stories, maximum three-story. Proposed P4 allows three, but the original EC allows five, so that's the warrant on that one. To prevent conflicts regarding street maintenance, private streets prohibited. Again, the city is requesting this to be private streets, and so the orange are the true, true warrants. I like to use this as exhibit. This is one where just clarifying, the city is wanting this to be private streets, so it's hard to apply some of this language to that. So, the yellow is straight-out warrant for references. Plazas are not permitted in P4 and require a minimum size of half acre. This is, again, the red is my comments, our staff's comments. Plazas are in accessory use, therefore, this rule doesn't really apply. So, again, I hate the word interpretation, but this is clarifying. When that was written, it was specifically for a plaza by itself. This just has some plazas with inside of it. Did I lose one? Okay. So, require parking to be located, again, that's as a clarification, parking requirements were adopted by City Council on January 4th, which allowed parking in all layers. Again, that's part of, as we go through this, FYI, we're in the process going back and cleaning up the code with a nice clean development code, parking code, etc., so all this stuff in law. So, again, this is transition of changes we've made over the past six months, and this clarifying what's in it. The next one is you require is all parking to be screened either by a building or other screening materials. Parking now, we've allowed, again, in this first layer, the screening requirements were not removed. So, we, we allowed the parking, but we didn't remove the screening. And again, you look at the location, this is, you know, typical commercial shopping center. The next one is maximum first floor story of a height of commercial building cannot exceed 25 feet from floor to ceiling. Why, that's in a development code. It's a development code. You're looking at outside looks. You're looking, this is telling, when you build a building, your inside floors have to be this dimension. So, this code section will be removed as part of, again, as stated, will be, as we clean up these code sections, it's, we're going to propose removing that section. Building frontage facade must be parked parallel to the right-of-way frontage line, not required. Based on layout with private streets, this is being met. Again, I'm gonna go back and forth is, this is, these will plant in a different lot, so what is the true building orientation? So, the blue lines are gonna be private streets within the development going through those different lots. So, is the building orientation 95, is the building orientation of the street deal? So, again, to make the layout work, it's really how do you apply that rule? What was that? So, then for, did I go back to the right one? There we go. So, that was a building facade, and then go back one. For corner lots, driveways must be located in a secondary frontage, not required. Again, as you saw that layout, the streets are private with secondary connection at Linden. For lots with more than 80-foot of wide street right-of-way, and again, they're talking about if you're on the street, it's 80-foot wide, not the length or parallel to the street, frontage, is saying if you're on the street 80-foot or wider, that you have to meet these requirements. And then based on safety concerns and Text Dot requirements, again, we're only doing one driveway with cross-access easement to the south side, with again, a second connection to Linden. And again, Linden and will be public, but everything within the development will be private. Max parking to be based on market and determined by DRC at site plan. Parking requirements were adopted at City Council specifically for single-family residential, and they were required to be 10 by 20 parking spaces. The next one is where they are, again, a true warrant, is requires parking space to be one space per bedroom for multifamily. And again, Shiva can go a little more detail on that. What's being proposed is for parking will be a minimum for 1.2 space per multifamily unit. So, you have the townhouses to the west that will meet the parking requirements, but the goal is to do shared parking between the retail and residences upstairs. You'll share that parking lot. So, he's asking for, instead of a straight bedroom requirement, 1.2 spaces per multifamily with units being mostly one and two units, to some being three units. So, you're not really, you're not proposing four or five units, only getting one parking space, and mostly one per two. And then on the minimum parking area, which again, we may go back and look at, is we require, when we wrote the ordinance, of a 10 by 20 space, and what's been proposed is a 9 by 18, which again, is usually, again, a typical space. And again, that's gonna help them with the impervious cover and add more parking spaces by a smaller pace. So, that's kind of how we came about the warrants, again, for clarification, is we wanted to make all these transparent, and those question on staff interpretation. We took this for August 28th, we're pulling P and Z, all these warrants, we're in that process. They approved this table. We, just as staff, once wanted to clarify what's really a warrant, what's not a warrant, and again, very, very transparent. These are different requirements, but specifically those five yellow ones are the main warrants. Any specific questions? Again, I'd like for Shiva to have a chance to come up and get more detail of what the project consists of.
Go ahead.
So, uh...
Mayor Protem Kirkman has a question.
I have a, I have a question about the parking. Talks about 1.2 places per unit as a minimum, and that's just not gonna fly. More specifically, I found three studies written 2020, 2022, and 2023, that talk about that being a viable number as a floor for transit-rich environments, cities with a lot of mass transit. But for rural car-dependent areas like us, going down to numbers like that is going to create a, I'm sorry, I don't want to curse, a friggin' disaster. Okay? You can't park on Highway 95. We know that, right? Because it's a highway. And then on the side street, which would be Linden, it's gonna be 26 feet wide, I think, which means you're gonna have parking on one side with people going very slowly on the other two lanes to, to go backwards and forth. And so, I, I don't, yeah, 1.2 per, it doesn't get you there. And I also found four studies talking about rural areas that are like 1.7 and 1.9 spaces per, plus more for the, the mixed-use retail. So, I think we might even be above one per bedroom for this requirement, to just have enough parking for basic safety and for the people that live there and that are shopping there to have enough places.
So, for clarification, we have no parking for commercial, but I hear you. Are you proposing staying with one per bedroom for the multifamily?
I mean, maybe. But I, you know how many bedrooms are there, and, you know? Yeah, the more floors you add, well, because this is going to a higher floor count, which I'm not inherently opposed to, but...
You want to have adequate parking for it?
Yeah, you absolutely have to have enough parking. So, anyway, I think that's kind of a discussion point for us when we get to it, but, yeah.
Any other items?
Councilmember Meyer.
Yeah, thanks. And that was absolutely what I was going to question also, because I do not want to ever encourage street parking. And I want us to stay true to the reasoning of why we have the parking, so that was a concern, Doc of mine. Also, on the, going south, on the entrance, exit going down to the side, that's just one to the south, right? That's it, going to 95?
That's one to the south, which is, again, they've been working with the Text Dot.
Right.
Text, part of their meeting with Text Dot, that will have to be an improved intersection with a right turn-hand deceleration lane and a left-hand turn lane also.
So, my, my concern on that is, and I don't know, because I don't have the whole area map, but Highway 95 at certain times of day backs all the way up to almost Hoffman, and actually past Hoffman going north. So, I'm real concerned about that one entrance-exit, first people being able to get in and out, but then the people on the highway being backed up even more with that because of the light. You know, since the light went in, it backs all the way up. So, that, that's a big concern I have. However, that being said, I don't want to encourage traffic to go on Linden and go through town, through Hill Street or anything else. So, I, I absolutely, I like 95 access, but 95 is, is hard because it backs up. So, I, I don't want to create a worse problem. And again, in other situations, we don't have the infrastructure in the other neighborhoods like Hill Street, Pecan Street, all of that, Linden, to support traffic. So, I do not want to create a bigger burden on that infrastructure on the streets.
So, we addressed, again, the best we could. We know, we knew we didn't want it on top of the hill, because of the line of sight, angle. We know we didn't want to have multiple, so again, we went to a shared access. Again, no disagreement with everything you're saying. At least it's one intersection instead of three or four along the highway, and that was the best spot. And again, the goal was that to be a shared access for both lots, understanding they've got to work with Text Dot and come up with turn lanes. But again, you're still, you're gonna, you're gonna have that stacking issue during peak times.
Yeah, that's, that's a huge concern for me. Just because I, kind of back in the day when we talked about, in the gateway, right, coming out, and that's such a bad area, well, I kind of almost get that same feeling with that at 95. So, that, that's why I'm super concerned about that.
Councilmember Lowe? Thank you. And, and the, the TIA was waived, right?
Yeah, because they're doing, they're working with Text Dot. Instead of doing TIA, they're addressing the TIA with through the traffic. Yeah, because they're doing it, they're working with text dot instead of doing TIA, they're addressing the TIA with through the traffic, improving that intersection.
Okay. And there, as far as on the improvements on 95. Is there a cost associated with that? And then what would the timeline be?
So the part of this overall process, again, this is just the PDD to get you to a true official drawings. Again, no, before we brought the PDD to you, we tried to be as many physical, there's no reason to be a PDD if we can address drainage, parking, access, et cetera. So as part of the overall development, once where the final approval is on this, they'll come back with site plans, detailed drawings, detailed drainage, detailed, you know, more traffic connection. And part of that process, that intersection, they'll have to show the text dot plan, show the permit with text dot. So the permit for the development will be based on those drawings approved by text dot. And they won't get COs till, until that's, that's built.
All right. Thank you. I want to underscore that.
That's going to be required. It has to be built before it opens for business, any part of it.
Yeah, I just wanted to draw a underline under that just so we can see it. Mayor Protem Kirkman.
One of the drawings had the topographical one foot lines. So we could see kind of, you know, the direction waters likely to flow, right? And it, if I remember correctly, it did look like it was going to go down to that corner naturally where you've got the detention pond. But the thing that is not, that wasn't clear to me, but I was hopeful is that if it did flow out of the detention pond, it would be able to go into the city's large drainage pond that was probably just slightly downhill from here. Is that true?
Going back and correcting, I get a lot of Shiva to speak to that. My understanding from what we're seeing is going to actually bypass our pond because our pond is burned to catch the water upstream. They're going to keep it at existing. Again, the pond has, again, we've allowed enough footprint for it to be final design. But the water should go around the pond and sheet flow like it does naturally. Go back. So if you see our pond is burned and we have pumps that our pond is a, not a sheet flow or drainage, natural drainage, we have to pump water out of the pond. So again, my understanding is the water will sheet flow out as you saw on the grading, it sheets flow to this corner. That pond was designed more to kick, pick up the water upstream from there.
Okay.
Real quick, Doc, can you, are you able to pull up page 129 or whichever one would depict? It shows the detention pond on their property as well as ours. It gives a, I don't know if you would have that on the slide. It's the one, the color for one, I don't know if you have a big enough depiction of all of that. See, yeah, if we add a little more to the left of that, the one that we're looking at, it shows a good visual of where it would go from more the proximity of their detention pond to ours. And just maybe even a little bit of an indication of where it might go, say something was to go wrong with that detention pond. It wouldn't drain or whatever, just kind of give a visual. Okay, no, no worries, no worries. Not trying to put you on the spot.
We're in the conceptual phase at this point. So, you know, this isn't even a preliminary drainage plan, but.
But we're talking about it, so might as well look at it while we're talking about it.
Yeah, but I was curious because when you talk to the neighbors on Hill and Linden, they're extremely concerned about flooding historically. And all of them have stories of, you know, normal rainfall produces, you know, I don't know, four to six inches of, of just water in their backyard and things like that. So we wouldn't want to do something that exasperates that.
So again, the good news is we've allowed enough footprint far upon it, allowed enough. Again, we know how much overall they'll need. Again, we'll get in, as you stated, Mr. Kirkland, we'll get in detailed drainage plans. And then part of the deal is in this area, you're putting a pond where you not have, you don't have existing ponding water. It's like in other areas that we've been looking at, you're putting a pond where we know the area floods already. So we've got good sheet flow off of this. We just can't increase the sheet flow off that side.
All right. Yeah, I, I can just say I, I agree with the council members with the concerns. 95 gets pretty congested at almost any given time of the day. And just whatever traffic is added to there, I can only imagine the impact it's going to have and what improvements are going to need to be done to that highway. There's like, yeah, 81 units plus retail is just, that's a big thing to consider, right? Even without the TIA, that's just a common sense thing that if you drive every single day here in Bastrop, you know, that is a nightmare.
95, all of them.
Right. And so just thinking about school time in the morning, how many kids are going to be coming into town, going to school, having to deal with that right there? Who knows? And then it is also the impact of the traffic to the residents in town on Hill and Linden and Pecan and even Main Street, right? People will be like, I don't want to go 95. I can cut through here. You know, now you have added traffic concerns to people who maybe be in a hurry or don't understand the neighborhood rules of slow down. Children are at play and they're trying to fly through. So it, it would add extra safety measures that we would have to put into the neighborhoods. And yeah, then I mean, it is on the hill. Just not to beat the dead horse with the flooding, right? That's a lot of shrubbery, trees, grass, a lot of stuff that holds up that flow of the water. So that's going to change dramatically. And, and I don't even know what it could, what kind of impact it could have to our service yard over there as well. So those are just kind of things to think about as we move forward, council. If you don't have anything else, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, your light came on. Sorry. Thank you. I didn't put my laptop down. All right. Councilmember Foster, go ahead.
Doc, I have a question about the proposed Highway 95 improvement in the turn lane. I'm zooming in on, on my screen so I can see it. At the maximum, it would be, it would be four lanes there right by the south entrance. Is that, is that true?
So you would keep the existing lanes and get, if you don't mind, let like Shiva to come up more detail because you've been working with text dot. You would have a deceleration lane to take a right into the site. Then you would have a turn lane, which is, you're going to be in center. So if you're going north, you'd have a turn lane that you'd have to wait for the south, traffic going south. So again, this concern is it'll be a controlled intersection, but you may have to center. So if you're going south, you can get into the deceleration lane and take a right in a southbound traffic and still go past you. So when you take in a right, you'll have a deceleration slash turn lane to get into developments of the existing southbound traffic. Again, depending on volume in that lane can continue to go south. Do you see that?
I do, yeah. So.
Northbound, you would have a turn lane that would again, allow you to get off in that turn lane, let that northbound traffic still go north. But if you're trying to make a left hand turn, you're going to have to wait for the southbound traffic to clear.
Mayor, council is always allowed to ask for a traffic impact analysis regardless of whether the staff with the numbers felt it was warranted. If council feels it's warranted, they can ask.
Okay. Council, I think we should take that in consideration. You should. Councilmember Foster, you have something else?
Well, I don't see any civic parks or civic areas or parks. They're doing a park fund, right? Does that come later in the presentation?
Well, they're going to probably, go ahead.
So they actually had submitted their application prior to us approving the Parkland ordinance that allows us to exact Parkland. However, the Texas local government code, so per 245, they would be exempted from complying with that. But it doesn't exempt them from complying with the Park Enrichment Fund. So they'll still be paying the Park Enrichment Fund fee per unit as adopted.
So basically they wouldn't have to have a park, right? Like at the restaurant or anything like that, play, play area for the kids. Okay. Just want to make sure.
They'll pay into a fund that we can use for parks in the area.
Just we could, I guess, enhance Jewel Hodges right there to be part of their park. Okay. All right. All right. We don't have anything else. Thank you, Doc. All right. We'll open up the public hearing. First that we have up to speak is Heather Green. Please state your name, address, all the good stuff. Thank you.
Heather Green, 2007 Pecan Street, just your friendly neighborhood north end advocate. I do have some concerns with this proposed development. I do like how big the space is and that they are not utilizing it all for just housing because that is unrealistic over there. But some of my big concerns are traffic. The idea that they will have a left hand turn lane and that they will ever get to turn left is absolutely unreasonable. I go to Buc-E's every morning. It's a running joke. We go to Buc-E's every single morning and we take Hawthorne to get to the light. And we sit there and even when the light turns green, we sit there because people run that light on a regular basis. When they're coming over the hill, they do not care. And the idea that we would have people trying to cut across feels like a setup for accident after accident for me. And then on top of that, it's right by the high school. And I don't know if you guys have been over there recently, but they're doing a lot of construction. And those kids, they don't care. They drive like high school kids. And so trying to get them to pay any kind of attention to any extra traffic seems unreasonable. And then there's only one entrance to get to 95, which means y'all are sending all the rest of that traffic right towards us. And we've had this conversation before when it comes to the north end prairie development, the streets are not meant to have high traffic. Hill Street already can't handle the high school traffic. And I don't, I don't see it, bless you, doing any better with adding, bless you, all of the stuff that is planned in that development. I am not opposed to development. I am not opposed to the ideas that are there. I do think that a traffic impact needs to be done for sure. And something else, there has to be more than one entrance and exit. And it has to lead somewhere other than into the city. The other thing that I, I might have a slight issue with is that it's going to affect downtown. And nobody came and had a conversation with any of the people that live on Linden or Hill Street where it's sending this traffic. And I know it's not directly right there, but it is gonna, it's going to have an impact on their traffic. And it's also going to have an impact on flooding, like you guys said. They're proposing putting a retention or detention pond, which would bypass the cities. We've already had the issue of flooding. What sits in my backyard right now where they are trying to develop is just a puddle. Anytime it rains, there is standing water. And I don't see putting more concrete fixing that problem. So I just would really ask you to take the time to think about what changing this zoning means. Because people get in their mind that when a zoning or preliminary plat is approved, they're done. And they'll tell people, people that they are done and it's a done deal and there's nothing they can do. So just take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. All right. We have Chris Kirby. Do you wish to speak? Yes. Okay. All right.
Good evening. Chris Kirby, 33, Lost Pines Avenue. As you can see, I didn't expect to come chat. I'm Councilmember Foster. They noticed me up to this thing and I really appreciate being made aware of it. You know, as, as I listen, I appreciate the concerns that y'all have about parking and about access on 95 and, and those issues. I think that, you know, I, I, should I say that I hope that there's sort of a countervailing thought that, that you're having a little bit about this. And a couple of those things are, you know, what else is going to happen with that property? At some point, something's going to go on there. At some point, whatever that thing is, is going to have cars going in and out of it and that sort of thing. And then the question is, what impact will it have on the city? Because ultimately, at the end of the day, the city's driven by revenue. And that, that is a, from an advarum tax perspective, that's going to be a much more valuable property if it has this on it or something on it than it is right now. I don't know if it's underag, but it wouldn't surprise me. So then you'd have a, you know, incredibly exponential increase in the amount of taxes that had come into the city, especially when you're talking about retail. And so if you are trying to think about what we're going to put on the eight square miles of Bastrop, that's going to actually pay for all of the services that the citizens want. Ultimately, at the end of the day, retail pays and residential generally draws on the tax base more than it pays into the tax base. A rooftop, the going phrase is that for every rooftop, it's $2 of taxes in cost for every dollar you collect off that rooftop. When you have this kind of mixed use development with retail underneath the, the residential, then you've got folks who are walking down to that retail to spend their money. They're not driving to it. And there'd be at least, what was it? 81 units I heard, I think I heard y'all say. Another thing that, that the city has thought a lot about is obtainable housing. And I'd like to, and this with townhomes and apartments right next to the high school. Hopefully that would mean that those folks would have the ability to live there and walk to work or be very close to it. And then finally, you know, you might think about one thing that you've been considering, I know just recently is the notion of pervious cover. And if you did that, and if you, if you asked the developers to utilize pervious rather than the, the current amount of impervious cover, then the amount of runoff would be significantly decreased, whether to their detention pond or to somewhere else. And, and might be able to help to mitigate the flooding issues that you've otherwise faced. Last thing I'd say is I wonder what's happening with the Highway 95 master plan. I can't imagine it's going to stay two lane forever. And that too is something that we might want to be thinking about because it is, as it expands, maybe we get text dot to take on some of those, those issues that are involved with ingress egress from this development. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kirby. All right. Michael, we have any other comments? All right. We'll close the public hearing. All right, council. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, come on. Yeah, yes. We, that's, that's, we, we need, that lets me know if people have something to say. So we're going to open, open it back up for Stephen to talk.
Thanks everyone for having me. My name is Siva Shankar. I'm with Paradise Engineers. My address is 4426 Tiger Run, San Antonio. Doc did a great job presenting this project and I just wanted to assist with some of the questions you guys had. As far as the parking goes, I know that you guys have one per bedroom requirement. And right now, I believe we have 90 apartment complexes. And the parking spots for the townhouses will be in the driveway that they have and garages. So that will be taken care of in the townhouses itself. But the apartment complexes, we have sufficient parking for one per one bedroom. Because the city doesn't have any ordinance for the retail. And so technically we could make that work, but just to ensure that we have sufficient parking overall, we ensure that we had the 1.2, which is what we're requesting, make sure that we have sufficient parking for all of them. But we can also do some sort of shared parking like Doc had mentioned earlier, where we can assist with being able to provide enough parking for, for everyone. And as far as the detention goes, the detention is actually going to be placed in the area where there's actually a drainage ditch already that's going into the city's pond. So if it does flood, which it should be able to take care of the 100 year flood. But if it does, it will go into the already drainage ditch that's already there and will ensure that it stays the same way and sufficient to be able to, to handle all the flows going through the area. So that, that red line that you see up there on the slide, that's actually a drainage easement that's already existing. So we won't be into the drainage easement. We'll make sure that the drainage easement and the ditch that's already there, the channelized ditch is going to maintain and ensure that all the flows go towards the, the larger drainage area if it ever does over pond, overflow on our pond. And then as far as text dot goes, it will be a dedicated left lane that's coming into there and a right turn. Even if we did a TIA, those are the results it's going to yield. That's the maximum improvements that can happen to this site based on traffic generated there. So we could go through a TIA, but it's going to come up with the same results that we will need a left turn lane and a right turn lane dedicated for the, for the traffic that's generated in that area. So just wanted to say that. And also Linden Street connection to Highway 95 is in the, the city's transportation plan. And the reason it hasn't happened is because that vertical side distance there is very dangerous for that connection to a north. So we had, we moved it down in order to actually have that connection from Linden to Highway 95 and to be able to provide better circulation within the city as provided. So that's, that's, that's why we have the Linden Street up there, which is going to go through our site. And our hope is to, you know, better circulate the, the traffic around the city and not cause any issues. So that's, that's essentially our plan there. And yeah, that's kind of all I had to say. Is there anything else that you guys wanted to ask me while I'm up here?
I didn't even get to see whose light came on first, but I moved my iPad and I got four lights lit up. We'll just start from the end down there. Councilmember Foster.
Okay. Thank you for explaining the number of bedrooms in the apartments. I was wondering, do you know the number of bedrooms in the townhomes yet?
Yes, ma'am. We'll have three bedrooms in there, three bedrooms to bed.
All of them will be three, too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So three. Okay, so three times, um, is it eighty-one units of townhomes? So three times, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. So I've got that, ma'am.
Oh, bedrooms, right?
Oh, but the townhomes have garages.
They all have garages and a driveway.
Two cars fit in the garage, so.
So, so that's three car, three cars potentially per townhome, is that what you're saying?
Well, you needed to, per Councilmember Foster's math, eighty-one townhomes times three bedrooms, but you need to divide that by half because cars fit in the driveway.
It, it's not eighty-one townhomes, it's thirty townhomes and three bedrooms, so.
I was, I was confused if units meant number of townhomes or number of bedrooms.
Units is the townhouses, which is thirty.
Okay.
And then the bedrooms are three bedrooms per townhouse.
Okay, so like ninety?
Equals ninety.
Ninety bedrooms in the townhomes, okay.
But, but those are taken care of by the driveways and the garages, so those should be fine. It's the apartments that are on top of the purple buildings, those are the ninety apartments.
Those are the ninety, okay.
And so that would require ninety spaces. And we currently show a hundred and eighty spaces on our site. So we would meet the requirements for one-to-one on the, on the apartments.
Okay, uh, we haven't talked about this yet in the plan. Is, are these homes, are any of these for, um, homeownership? Are they all rentals? What's the plan for their?
Um, I think they could be for, um, would, is, is the plan for?
I was assuming the art apartments?
Rentals.
Townhomes are rentals as well? Townhomes. I'm sorry?
Can you come speak into the mic, please? Thank you. And also, when you come up here, you mind introducing yourself?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my name is Kumar Savitella, um, lives at Round Rock, one six seven zero one Marcelo Springs. And I'm the representative of the owners. I'm the project admin for that. I can work with, uh, Paradise Engineering and the city.
Okay.
So the actual townhomes, uh, that's gonna be, um, a dedicated townhome, but, but it's actually two to three. And some units are three units, some are two. So these are actually a, uh, individual townhome, but connected to each other and will be sold or rented based on, uh, you know, market conditions at that time.
Okay.
Whereas for the apartments, it's basically for rentals.
For rentals, okay, gotcha. Would you consider, I know we can't require, but would you consider doing a designated number, um, of like affordable units or attainable units at a different, like?
So based on the, um, demographics and as well as the economic, uh, and then, um, the market conditions, we thought that the bigger units actually gives much better, uh, um, feasibility for the people who wants to live, go to work and as well as close to the schools. So we did actually a lot of research before we actually come up with this three-bedroom townhomes. It's best, a family of, you know, wife and husband with the kids can happily live there with the spacious, uh, townhomes there. Uh, that's what they're actually intent when we actually started this. And we did a lot of research within the two years of our, um, you know, process. We're going back and forth with this and before we decide this project, which generally helps families, basically.
Right, okay. Let me see if I have any other questions. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that the current, the current zoning is employment center. So everything that they're asking for, like they're, they're asking for a downzone. That's true, right? I mean, an employment center, like much more impervious cover is allowed, much more, uh, five stories or, so what they're actually asking for is to be downzoned and asking for a more stringent, um, set of codes to abide by, is that true?
Well, again, that's the work that y'all don't always see behind the scenes. This has been like almost a two-year project, yes. They can come in, do straight zoning, do a lot more than they're proposing. This is the city staff and developer trying to work with. And again, we hear your concerns, don't disagree with your concerns. We're trying to bring a better product to address some of these concerns. And you're always gonna have requirements and concerns, they need to go back to the drawing board on. But this is a lot less than they're currently allowed. And again, with this true PDD, and I love PDD's from other lives, I would say, this is gonna be the final product. Where you go straight zoning, it's a blank slate. This is what you're gonna get when it gets through.
Right, okay, thanks.
We are sort of paying for sins of the past. A form-based code that has no parking regulations for commercial, none, zilch. You know, a code that has eighty percent impervious cover for commercial when we were trying to solve drainage? Nope. Um, a code that has, uh, a grid system that allows Linden onto ninety-five, which it takes more than a forty-five degree of your head to even try to see past that intersection back onto ninety-five. Um, super, super, super difficult. This site has been super difficult and I think staff have done a yeoman's job. We still remain concerned. Um, and I would highly encourage the council to request a transportation impact because we still, there's still a lot to resolve on the site. I get it, everybody wants the highest return on investment, but sometimes the site just doesn't fit that.
All right, Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, my question was, uh, and I'm not sure if it's for Doc or for engineer, but, um, and I think you've pretty much answered it, I just wanted to underscore. I mean, we, they, there's nothing here that they can't do without the, with the cur, that they cannot do with the current zoning. Is that correct? Besides some of the warrants potentially.
Well, again, zoning slash place type is U-CIS. That doesn't, so basically with that place type, they're allowed to eighty percent coverage.
Correct.
They still have to make the drainage works, which if they wanna go to eighty percent means a larger pond. So again, it's kinda that give and take. But so again, from a land use, from a zoning aspect, yes, the employment center is a lot more liberal use. Understanding the physical concerns y'all brought up tonight, the parking, the drainage, the driveways are gonna apply and it's still applying.
The employment center would not allow the residential use.
Oh, got it. So, so in the non-use based, form-based code, there was a use, uh, restriction. Got it.
I wish you guys would try to work in this code. I wish the people that wrote this code would try to work.
I did, that's why I'm sitting here.
I, I remember trying to slice and dice it, it was a little difficult trying to get it understand. Okay, Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. So, um, I'm, I'm really having flashbacks to Gateway Project, Highway ninety-five, here we go again. Because I, I, when we do traffic study, which that would be the minimum thing, but there's no way you can tell me you can leave and go out and make a left turn safely. Okay, we can do it, but is it safe? Because our number one place to have accidents is in front of Buc-Ee's, which we've got the same situation. So that's just kinda common sense to me. I don't really, I'm not an engineer, but I do have common sense, so that, that tells me that. The other thing is like, okay, when we say, well, this is downzoning and it could be an employment center, well, what does that even mean? I mean, do we even know what that is compared to the volume that would come here? I, I don't know what that, I would like to know what those numbers are. There are different kind of employment centers, right? So I don't even know what that means.
From an employment center standpoint, you're gonna be able to have a large, I, I'm just gonna make up a large retail box. You're gonna have a Walmart there, um, that is eighty percent impervious cover and parked to the hilt. Now, they still have to drain it. Yes, that's very true. They still have to drain it. And they would still have to do some of those dedicated turn lanes. What, I think the difference in an employment center is the number of traffic counts coming in and out. Residential counts have a significantly larger count just because you do have people coming in and out before work, after work, during school, running errands, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so.
I get that, and I do. And, and because of that, can't do anything about it, zone the way it is. But that's absolutely absurd for that to be zoned employment center, right, in my opinion. Just, again, common sense didn't come into play when these codes and everything were written, so.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Meyer. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Okay, so, um, back to, pardon me, the topic I was talking about earlier about parking spots. Um, how many apartment complexes are there?
There's a total of fifty-one units. Apartment complexes, right? Yeah, total of fifty-one apartments, apartments. In the purple buildings, total.
So you're looking at like fifteen per floor?
We have, we have, um, we'll have two one-bedrooms per floor on, on one of the buildings. So total on both of them together, we'll have four one-bedrooms per floor. And then we'll have thirteen two-bedrooms per floor.
And that's on how many floors?
Three floors.
Three floors?
And that's, that's the max we can have. When we do, when we did our feasibility study for the, um, wastewater, that's the max we asked for. And that's what's gonna work, so we can't have any more than that. And, and based on the bedrooms, we have ninety bedrooms total in apartments, which is what the parking is based off of, the bedrooms.
So I say that again, you'll have nine bedrooms?
Ninety bedrooms.
Ninety, got it, yeah.
And that's what the parking is based off of. So you'll need one per bedroom, so we'll need ninety spaces. And right now, we have a hundred and eighty spaces proposed.
But that's also shared with the retail.
That's also.
All right, and just, so we've spent quite a bit of time talking about the housing, right? It's gonna have the retail. Um, I know you guys can't necessarily guarantee, you know, occupants in there. But again, that is a thought that crosses my mind is to have this, these apartments with empty retail spaces underneath that aren't able to be filled. And now we have a half-used building that's, you know, open for whatever, right next to the baseball field. Right, so this is kind of, what are your plans to ensure that you have, uh, constant amount of tenants in there outside of residents? And then what are we looking at as far as a restaurant, right? Um, you know, not just something that's gonna come in and not be successful, but what's something that's gonna work for the neighborhood and still be around. And I know there's no guarantee, right, but still, um.
Shiva, how many square feet of, of, uh, commercial do you have?
Uh, about twenty, twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand divided by two hundred per square foot on average for retail is... Somebody do the math for me.
Twelve spaces. So, I mean, this is twelve.
Normally, so for retail is about two, you know, one parking space for every two hundred square feet. You get into some more intense uses, um, restaurants, gathering spaces, those kinds of things. We might go down a little bit more, but it's normally one to every two hundred, one to every two fifty. So if you have twenty-five thousand square feet of retail, divided that by two hundred.
I was, I was using one per three hundred.
You're using one per three hundred.
And then one per two hundred for the restaurant. And, um, and that's where we came up with the one point two spaces for the apartments.
It's, it, uh, probably a better ratio is gonna be one to two hundred just because we are a, an area that does not have, uh, mass transportation and everybody here drives. So if you did one to two hundred, that's a hundred and twenty units. Hundred and twenty plus the ninety you're required to have is two-ten. And you, or however many that is, 'cause my brain is fried. And so you're short, how many units? How many parking spaces?
Uh, thirty.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, either if it works out, good. And we're faced with the extra cars that's gonna be in there on a busy day, which will find its way trinkling down to Linden, onto our Saint Community Senior Center parking lot, competing with the Little League twice a week and on game days twice a week, and then let alone practices right there. And so it's just, that is a concern, are we, you know, to, and this is an unfortunate catch twenty-two, but if you build a retail, will they come and will they stay? And if you do and it's successful, like that is a large amount of vehicles and people that are going to be in that vicinity. Um, and I can just, I can see the bottleneck right there. You know, so I, and I'm just, you know, I'm just throwing out the facts of the reality of the things that we see and observe, right? That's just from the day-to-day here, so, Mayor Pro Tim.
So let me, uh, I, uh, the, the, the cap of this pen is magically ten parking spaces on your, on this drawing. And so I've been using it to measure the parking places. I mean, like, okay, one, two, three, anyway. So, um, I mean, I see, especially if you used, uh, pervious pavement, which means you would get fifty percent credit back for that.
Maybe. Depends on their geotechnical. Don't throw a number up that we don't know yet.
Fair enough. Okay, fair enough. But regardless of what the number is, uh, you would get enough credit back, unless it was zero, um, to get another thirty spots and not mess with your pervious coverage. Uh, because there's spot on the far north, the far south, uh, adjoining the townhomes that are closest to the apartment. Uh, that would even give you more parking for the restaurant. Also, the far south where that red line is, uh, you know, if it's not flooded, you can park cars there. So I mean, there's, there is enough space to get thirty more spots on the lot. And you can handle the drainage issue with pervious in, you know, those areas are all of the areas.
Yes, sir.
At least would sort of fit.
Sort of. Um, my, my concern about the pervious papers, and I've, I've said this to staff and I know they don't wanna hear it from me anymore, is it's always dependent on the geotechnical. There may be soil conditions there where the pervious papers just don't work and it just runs off. It might be a slope condition, it might be a variety of conditions. So I hate to say that fifty percent is going to be the number.
Yeah, I guess it's up to fifty percent.
Yes, I, I wanna remind the council so to, you know, I think the horse is dead and I don't think we need to beat it anymore, at least tonight, anyway. Um, the council can put all sorts of stipulations on the PDD. The council is also able to say, we need more information before we make a decision. And you can send the applicant back for additional information, whatever that information may be. Um, you may also tell the applicant, these three things are not going to work for us, so please go back and re-figure that out.
And I, I'll say that this was brought before PENZI, right, on Thursday or last week. And, um, a week before. And so that following Tuesday, I was on the phone with Shiva and he, he returned my call. And I've made some suggestions to him about community involvement and maybe setting up some meetings and talking with the citizens. So I really do hope that y'all followed through with that. Um, definitely, there are some here in the room tonight, maybe make some contact with them before y'all leave. And really try to set up a, a community meeting with those guys over at the park or something. And just get the input and, and feel of the community and the neighborhood, not just ones within two hundred feet, right? It's, it's heavily impacted for, you know, a mile away from their, that spot, so. I would definitely recommend that. And thank you for taking my call and returning it and, and, you know, of understanding where I'm coming from.
Of course, yeah, I totally get it, understand. One other point that you made earlier was about the, um, like a open space for the community. Um, while it might not be like a full dedicated thing to, to the public, there is that, if you see that little courtyard there, the concrete with some grass areas, that's gonna be like a little nice, um, courtyard area where, um, if, if, if people go there for retail, they'll have a nice little area there they can.
So, okay, I'm, I'm aware about a restaurant?
You see where the purple buildings are?
Okay, I'm, so I'm looking at a lot, man, I'm not just gonna hear so far.
The little triangle area there. That's gonna be dedicated specifically for people to go hang out at once they go to retail and, and be able to just have a really nice relaxing area. So that's, um, essentially dedicated for that.
Okay.
Purpose.
All right, thank you, Shiva.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councilmember Foster.
Thanks, Shiva. Um, I was also looking at that Plaza area or gathering area on the, on the renderings. I was checking out the renderings and we have like a, a food truck stage there. It would be great, like because we do have, we are a live music town, it would be great to be able to program that space. And I, I just keep looking for like overflow parking for when there's an event or something special because if you're part of the community, we will be asking you to do community things. And, and there will be times when there will be more, more people parked there. And I wonder if, um, some of the yellow townhomes, if you would be willing to consider losing one of those altogether for an overflow parking area or just, I know it messes up the symmetry, but there, there, there may be a time when, when it's needed and the extra space may be needed.
Councilmember Foster, this is a private development. We can't ask them to program any public and we cannot use public funds on private development.
Okay, we're gonna ask you though. As a citizen, I'm gonna ask you.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's, that's great. I'll definitely let our clients know. And I think they'd be more than happy to, um, accommodate you guys.
All right, Councilmember Foster, you good? All right. All right, uh, do we have anything else? No? No?
So, Mayor, what I would recommend, um, so that we're not horse-trading from the dais, and I'm, I'm about to throw my pen at my attorney for not stopping y'all from horse-trading on the dais, but...
Well, now, look, I kept...
I know, I know, I got wood clash, too, but I kept going, stand, anyway. Um, so what I would really like is, uh, the council to recommend what you would like staff to do, if you want to, and, and this is a direction to staff, not to the developer. So, Shiva, if you would please switch places with Doc again.
I'm the favor of the owners and developers, and first of all, I appreciate CD and as well as, um, thank you, Shiva, for being so patient with us. We're doing this exercise for the last two years. We go back and forth with the different, different plans, and trying to avoid, um, especially the safety. By the way, um, I'm fifty-six years toddler. My life started in Bastrop. I was born in Bastrop twenty-six years back. I'm just joking. My life started in Bastrop, I used to live in Taishan Village. So one of the biggest thing for me is the safety, and then also work with the city to get what needed for the city. And then in terms of safety, as well as everything, so we really, really want you to, um, give us some kind of direction, and I understand all the concerns. Thank you, councilmembers, mayor. But anything that we can do to develop that, a piece of, you know, I, I call diamond, that needed, the city needs to get both economically and financially, as well as for the living aspect of the people. So we are, we are eager, we want to do it. Any help, any direction that we get, greatly, greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam City Manager, you wanna get back to it?
Yes, one, absolutely, economic development is important, but, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back with an ROI of what it would take me to fix those streets, and the ROI is not there, so we're gonna leave that there. Um, I would please like you to give the staff direction. What would you like to see happen? If you're concerned with access off of ninety-five, if you're concerned off of Linden, if you're concerned, whatever it is that you're concerned about, please give us direction. We have some alternatives, perhaps it is an outlet off of Linden to Hill. Maybe it's a widening of Hill, right there at the Little League Park, while we've got Little League improvements underway, and we've got improvements to Mesquite that are going to happen. Please let us know, because there are some solutions, um, from just a professional opinion that you can take with, you know, fifty cents and still not be able to get a cup of coffee. Um, this is, this is an area that is of concern because of the traffic at ninety-five, the speed at ninety-five, the elevation here. So my suggestion to the development would be, please go revisit your density. I know we all wanna cram as many things as we can, but sometimes that just does not work. I know that you've been at this site, 'cause you brought this site to me when I was a new babe here in Bastrop, and you had a different developer, you had a different engineer who was from San Antonio, and it was difficult to even try to get this site in such a position. So again, staff's done a yeoman's job to try to get it here. Thank you, Shiva, for trying to get it here. Uh, just please send us back with some good, uh, data, or some good recommendations that we can come back to the developer with.
All right, council, what you have? Mayor Protim?
So, I feel like, well goodness, I mean, we could make a motion, um, at this point, I guess, but I, I'd also wanna talk about what we wanna give in terms of staff direction. I would motion that we, uh, table this item until our, uh, next regularly scheduled council meeting, uh, and then, uh, we discuss the direction to staff immediately afterwards.
Mayor, you need to close the public hearing.
Yeah, that, I figured as much. Okay. We're gonna close, 'cause I did open it back up, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay, now we can resume the conversation.
Okay. So I motion that we, uh, table this item to the direct, next regularly scheduled meeting, and then we discuss, uh, additional direction to staff immediately afterwards.
All right, uh, is there anyone that would not like to table it, or would like to give staff some, some direction? Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this until our next staff meeting, our next council meeting, where we will make a decision at that point?
And also to discuss staff direction.
And give staff direction, okay. Do you have that motion, Michael?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passes unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, so in terms of staff direction, I, I think that we've talked about TIA, In Traffic Impact Analysis. I'd also like the, the parking multipliers to be more clear. I mean, these things go into, uh, you know, official zoning documents that attach to the property, that even if this developer sells the land, goes to the next person. And, and, and a statement in it, like, one point two parking spaces per, you know, multifamily unit, is very ambiguous. Um, and so I would like us to, to go back to our rule of one per bedroom, but then in order to accommodate the, uh, parking for the retail, you know, give us a, like, one per bedroom plus X per square feet of retail, something like that, that, that we can defend, and maybe we even need to add to our code, um, but that would be a, uh, minimum number of parking places for this development. So, those are two things that, that I can think of, and I kinda wanna know if anyone else has any ideas.
We, we can absolutely do that under the PDD. If this stays as an EC, maybe not so much, but absolutely under PDD.
Councilmember Meyer?
I'm also very concerned. To me, it, it wouldn't even be acceptable to consider anything done on Hill Street, because we have the Little League fields, the baseball fields. I sure don't wanna do anything to direct traffic more in front of the baseball fields to get on ninety-five, 'cause that's a mess anyway, and those kids shoot across the street, so they're taking their own lives in their hands when they do it right now. And I sure don't want them to go south on Hill, so to me, we've gotta take going into town off the table. We, we've just gotta take going into town off the table.
So that's no access off of Linden?
Correct.
Councilmember Lowe?
I don't even know if this is a possibility, but, uh...
It's a PDD, ask away.
Okay, yeah, go for it.
Community involvement. Outreach to the community. Talk to people, right? You know, we, we've been here before, so...
Uh, community open house?
Right.
Do you want the city to facilitate that, or do you want the developer to do that?
City?
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yeah, one of, uh, my close friends that lives on Hill Street, I don't know, it's probably like the fifth closest house to, to this planned development, uh, he learned about it today, 'cause I called him and to ask him his opinion, and he's like, oh, I hadn't heard about that, so, um, and he's not opposed to it, but I think, you know, getting the neighbors to, uh, yeah, to weigh in, yeah.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. I don't know if we said this or not, but a TIA, for sure.
Yes. Councilmembers, we have any other things to consider? I, I, I think...
I wanna ask about the TIA in general. Do you want, uh, a stamped TIA, or do you want a TIA where we do the calculations based on transportation tables? Two completely different things. A TIA will take a couple months to do. A TIA that we generate based on tables and maximum uses, a couple weeks, maybe a week.
That's, I just want, that, that'd be fine.
Just get you some numbers.
I just want, yeah, that's really what I want.
I think it's also, um, important that, um, contact with the, I don't even know what to call them now, BYSO, YSO, the Bastrop Youth Softball, Baseball Youth Organization, um, they changed their name, so, uh, but really, um, you guys, they're gonna be right next to them, and, um, you're gonna have hundreds and hundreds of parents who are gonna be overly concerned about just the impact of that neighborhood. Um, like, you're seeing kids running around there like crazy.
The organization, the developer actually offered to pave the parking lot on, uh, Linden Street, but because we are doing work, uh, in that area, I opted to not have them do that just yet, simply because we're not ready, and to get it done and then have construction happen, it's gonna...
Right, yeah, no, that's massacres, we can't do that. Okay, so, all right, Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I was just, uh, the, um, stipulation that Councilmember Meyer put on about the, uh, no access from Linden, um, can we move that to the, um, open house, you know, forum from the neighborhood? 'Cause if there's gonna be, you know, nice retail and a restaurant and stuff, I know if I lived in that neighborhood, I would prefer to have access to it. So, can we at least get some input from the neighborhood about what they would rather have or not have?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. 'Cause, you know, kind of my thought has always been, you know, to have something for the residents on the north end, have for themselves, be able to go and do a little bit of shopping and eating, 'cause it's just never been anything over there. But in that, it has to be strategically done, it done right, and in a correct manner for the people of the north end, and not just something that's jammed in their throat and be like, hey, we got y'all some, hope you happy, come spend your money over here, right? It's not that type of deal. So, um, I think having something over there for them is very beneficial, and to Councilmember Plunkett's point, there are gonna be some people who are gonna wanna say, hey, I got shopping right here, I don't have to go across the bridge and deal with the traffic, I can do it right here, I got a little restaurant here I can eat. But also, at the same time, you're gonna have people from across the town that's gonna be like, hey, there's something new over here. I don't wanna go down ninety-five, I'm gonna cut through town, because there's three extra streets that I can take before I can get to Linden, so those are things definitely to consider. Um, I don't even know which one of y'all lit the light up first. Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Madam City Manager, you, uh, asked about the TIA and what version. Um, I think one of the things that's probably most interesting is what Highway ninety-five is going to do. Um, when you're at peak traffic, uh, turning left, turning right, out of the, the place, uh, but also, uh, peak traffic coming home, if you are headed north on ninety-five and you're gonna turn left, there is a, a turn lane there, and so I'm curious, is it gonna back all the way up with cars in that turn lane past the stoplight? 'Cause you back up past the stoplight in a turn lane like that, you're gonna have a complete mess on your hands. Um, and I don't know that it'll do that, but that's, I think, for me, the most interesting question, is what that turn lane is gonna do at peak traffic for turning into and out of the development. So, anyway, you asked a question about what style of TIA, and then I'm saying this is the most interesting problem. Uh, which style of TIA answers that, I think is really the question.
Is that all?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you, and my lights can stay off now, this is my last comment. Uh, I, with the public input, I want to especially be sensitive and, and really reach very far to the senior center, and Kathy being here tonight tells me a lot, and I, I really wanna make sure the seniors know for the public input, when things are going on, and, and are able to come and express. So it's critical that we bend over backwards till the seniors know, too.
We may have it there, Kathy. We may have it there.
Right, I think if the parking's good for them, y'all have the room, right? So... All right, is that all we have for recommendations for staff? All right, thank you, council, for that. All right. Agenda item nine C, consider an act to approve the first reading of ordinance, and thank you, Shiva, and everyone for giving us your time. All right, item, agenda item nine C, consider an act to approve the first reading of ordinance number two zero two five dash six six, amending the code of ordinances related to chapter one point one zero titled Parks, article point one zero, point zero zero two titled Parks. Rules amending the content to allow use by individuals and move to include on September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five consent agenda, agenda for the second reading. Hello, chief.
Good evening, mayor and council. So, this is regarding the concession stand at the Splash Pad in Fishman's Park. Um, it was developed to provide recreational entrepreneurial opportunities, and, um, use of this facility is governed by our city code. Currently, our code allows for the concession stand to be available for use by persons under the age of seventeen, but nobody else. Um, and so this proposed amendment would allow the use of concession stand by all individuals. However, should council choose to go forward with this, we would actually, I would actually like to add all individuals allowed by law. Um, and so essentially, what we're asking is for the verbiage to be changed. Any questions?
Counsel? Mayor Protim Kirkland?
So, um, I, I, all of our city's ordinances, just beginning in for, I don't know, strange entertainment value. Posse power, mayor, that's all I have to say. And, um, I'm surprised I missed this one, because you can't sell things in the park if you're over seventeen. That's kinda crazy. But anyway, unless anyone else has anything, uh, motion to approve with the change that it's all individuals allowed by law.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, council, thank you, chief. All right, agenda item nine D, considering an act on resolution number R dash two zero two five dash one five two, amending the current city of Bastrop lease agreement with the Lower Colorado River Authority, LRA, regarding the LCRA tract known as the Steel Yard, BY dash zero one, and more particular to describe therein, amending the verbiage of the purpose.
Good evening, mayor and council, again. So, on March eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the city of Bastrop, known as the tenant, and the Lower Colorado River Authority, LCRA, entered into a lease agreement regarding the use of twenty point nine seven acres, um, of land also known as the Rusty Reynolds Little League Complex. The purpose of the amendment, uh, to this lease is to modify verbiage under the purpose section to provide for a broader use. Um, so essentially, what it will state is the purpose of this lease agreement is to br- provide for development, development would be an added word, uh, the management, maintenance, and the use of the premises and facilities for, and then add the words, public outdoor recreation for the use and benefit of the general public. Um, and so I'm asking for an amendment to the LCRA contract. Do you have any questions?
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Why are we changing it?
Uh, generally, it says the city's Little League program, and we don't have a Little League program, so it is just to provide broader usage for the public.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimous. Thank you, chief. Nine E, consider an act on resolution number R dash two zero two five dash one five six pertaining to a warrant request to allow up to eighty percent lot coverage on forty-three point eight one seven six acres, zone P five core in the Cinderell Development, and deviation from the sixty-five percent maximum lot coverage currently required by the B three code.
Thank you, good evening. So this request is gonna apply to a total of nine lots or forty-three point eight acres, zone P five core, and located northeast of the intersection of State Highway seventy-one and FM nine six nine. The Cinderell Development, previously known as Pearl River, um, consists of ten buildable lots, three in the north, zoned P four mix, which is the location of the Alta Trails Apartments, and seven on the south portion, zoned P five core, to be developed as commercial. This warrant request, just to clarify, only applies to the P five portion. So some background, this project has been in the works for a few years now. Back in two thousand twenty-two is when the city council originally approved the zoning concept scheme, which adopted the proposed zoning of P five and P four, and included the preliminary, um, development layout. The Cinderell, uh, I went backwards, sorry. And then in two thousand twenty-three is when the master final drainage plan was originally approved by our engineering staff. The drainage plan explicitly was designed for eighty percent impervious coverage on the P five portion, and, um, since then, the public improvement plan has been approved, and all drainage infrastructure has been installed. And then back in January of two thousand twenty-five is when the city council adopted a new ordinance, um, reducing the maximum allowable lot coverage in P five from eighty percent to sixty-five percent. So as a result, the individual lots now applying for their site development plans, um, are being asked to comply with this new lot coverage allowance, allowance of sixty-five percent. So in, as a result, the Cinderell, um, applicant has applied on behalf of all P five portion lots. So in, as a result, the Cendaro applicant has applied on behalf of all P5 portion lots to go back to the 80% lot coverage allowance. And then I put a side by side here, on the left are the requirements within the B3 code that were in effect at the time of these previous approvals, the subdivision plat, the zoning change and the zoning plan or drainage plan approval. And then on the right is currently sitting at 65%. So the B3 code does have a warrant process that is built into it, which is designed to accommodate certain deviations from the code. When strict compliance with the code doesn't really make sense and staff does believe that since the context of the previous approvals, the drainage infrastructure already being installed, the justification and the alignment with the B3 code, it just makes sense to take this warrant forward to you guys. The planning commission did hear this request at their August 28th meeting and they did recommend approval and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I do have a question. It probably is gonna get asked a lot. What is the ETA on trees on that development?
So I wasn't here at that time, but I believe they did post a bond for that and once these new sites start coming in, we are asking for their landscape plan, for the trees that they're gonna be planting to see if any of that's gonna be credited towards their mitigation fees or not.
Right, and I'm just, because that's what I keep getting asked here as of late, like, all right, I thought y'all said they're gonna put some trees back and they're building more buildings and no trees, so just kind of...
Yeah, it's at this, it's at this point when the individual lots are submitting their site development plans that we ask for that landscape plan.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
In terms of the process we're, we're at, they have a final drainage plan already approved, is that correct?
Yes, it was approved back in 2023.
Right, so it's a final drainage plan that was approved for 80% site coverage?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thanks. You know, earlier in the year, there was a development going and I believe north of this, if I'm not mistaken, is it a convenience store or something? And we, they, they wanted 80 and, but we enforced the 65, is that right? Am I thinking right on that?
No, we split the baby. We said dig the pond deeper to accommodate...
So we required that to, for them to get that percentage?
And, and which is the same thing that's happening here, the depth of that pond.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Councilmember Lowe?
Thank you. The document says the lot coverage is not vested, right? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What are the legal ramifications of granting a warrant that contradicts the new ordinance? Could it open Pandora's box is basically what I'm asking.
So in the, in this case, they've already had an engineered solution, I would say, because they've already installed all the infrastructure and the drainage pond to account for 80% runoff. So this case is a little bit different since they've already been approved at that and they've already had the engineered plans that make it work.
All right, councilmembers, do we have anything else? No?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Brittany. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimous, excuse me. All right, agenda item 9F, consider an act on a resolution number R dash 2025 dash 157 pertaining to a warrant request to allow up to 80% lot coverage on a 7.27 acre lot zone P5 core located at the existing Lone Star Storage Complex. The request seeks to deviate from the current 65% maximum lot coverage requirement established by the B3 code in order to accommodate an expansion that includes two new buildings and additional pavement. Brittany?
Yes, so very similar request on this one. The Lone Star Storage is an existing commercial facility, which has, obviously this project began long before the Cendaro Development. This located just adjacent to them and also zone P5 core on approximately 7.27 acres. And at the time of the Cendaro Development was designed and reviewed, Lone Star Storage entered into a partnership with them because they had, they had planned an expansion or phase two of their development to add the two additional buildings. And the Cendaro drainage infrastructure specifically planned to discharge Lone Star's runoff into their pond, which is located just left of their site. And again, they took into consideration 80, up to 80% lot coverage from Lone Star Storage as well. And that was all reviewed and approved along with their final drainage plan in 2023. And then this year, again, same situation with the reduced lot coverage allowance in P5, they're just in the same situation that Cendaro now is in. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on this one. The planning commission also recommended approval at their last meeting.
Councilmember Meyer?
So basically, we're just saying the same thing. They can do it just like the convenience store did, like Cendaro, so everything's same. Cool, thank you.
All right, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, thank you, Brittany.
Thank you.
All right, 9G, consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025 dash 70, establishing 2.195 acres located at 610 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive in Bastrop, Texas, as designated parkland and moved to include on September 23rd, 2025 consent agenda for a second reading. Chief? Welcome back.
Good evening again. All right, so let me make sure I pull this thing up. On June 4th, 2024, the city of Bastrop purchased 2.95 acres of land at the location of 610 MLK. This property is located in the Gills Branch Tributary, which traverses through the property. The property is located in the 100-year floodplain and the property is located in a floodway, meaning the area must be kept open to efficiently carry the majority of floodwaters during high-flow events, which is essentially necessary for the natural flow of water. The intent of establishing this property as parkland is to prevent detrimental development from occurring on this land. This is the Google Maps, so it shows you the location right off of MLK across from Emile Elementary School. And then here's the survey for the property. And I messed it up. There we go. Any questions?
Council? All right.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, council, thank you, chief. All right, it is now 8:47 and we will go into executive session for agenda item 10A. City council should convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, section 55.071, to seek advice of legal counsel and discuss deliberating regardless, regarding real estate located at 1409 Emile Street. It is now 6:48 and we're going into executive session. 8:48, thank you. All right, it is now 8:51, the fastest executive session ever, and we're back from executive session. All right, no action to be taken. Onto agenda item 12.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Better not be. Good night, Bastrop, we love y'all. Thank you for watching, thank you for attending. All right, have a great night.